So they're sitting next to your dad during the council meeting, my elbow gets sore.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, August eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I have one addition for you. I handed out some information on your desk. It's a I'm gonna add it as item twelve point five under new business, but it's, we're looking for approval for emergency replacement of some meter reading systems on our water towers. I think we had a lightning strike, so. But just ask that you add that to the agenda for consideration.
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of twelve point five water tower meter.
Second.
Motion by, yeah, second by Tim to approve the agenda with the addition. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carries. Implications from Faith Lutheran Church. Good evening.
Good afternoon or evening. Right in the middle ground, right in that middle ground. Thank you for inviting Faith Lutheran Church here. I am Jeff Amundson, part of the staff at Faith. Please quiet your heart and your mind. Heavenly Father, thank you for being here with us tonight and allowing safe journeys to and from this meeting. We ask that you give those gathered here calm and peace so that they might listen and engage in conversation. Grant them the blessing of discernment to make decisions that are not only sound but benefit others, helping their fellow neighbors. Let your will guide them and may your great grace bless them in their work tonight. And may your blessings fall in this great meeting and this wonderful city and its businesses. Allowing continued growth and positive progress, leading to better lives for all citizens of Hutchinson and for all those working, playing, and shopping here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, a pledge of allegiance.
Hi, pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? All right, we do have a resolution underneath there. It's resolution number one, five, six, one, four. Resolution accepting thirty-two hundred dollar donation from Jim and Fa- Jim and Linda Fahey for purchasing insulation of town town benches.
Motion to approve resolution one, five, six, one, four.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. Public comment, citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Radio approval minutes, we have the minutes, regular meeting minutes of July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and the council workshop of July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
So, second.
Motion by Dave, second by Tim to approve minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, carry. Consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Approval of forgivable loan agreement with Bridge Children's Finance, childcare provider funding. B is approval issuing short-term gambling license to the Vineyard United Methodist Church from August seventeenth through the twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, at the McLeod County Fair. C is approval of purchase of truck and dump body. D is approval of resolution number one, five, six, one, five. Resolution creating water wastewater plant operator position and amendment of the two thousand twenty-three position classification table. And E is board reappointments, Andy Nissen's to the Sustainability Board to May of two thousand twenty-six. Kim Pearson to the Police Civil Service Commission to May of two thousand twenty-six. Ashley Gabbard and Joshua Camrath to the Price Advisory Board until August of two thousand twenty-six. Connie Dahl to the Senior Advisory Board to January two thousand twenty-six. And F is claims of procreation and contract payments. Anything anybody wants pulled off? You're seeing the motion to?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. Let's skip down to communication request petition, discussion on new proposed rate structure for the Hutchinson Utilities Commission.
Jimmy Carter joining us.
Mr. Carter.
Like a familiar place in here.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mayor Council members, for allowing me to come tonight and just speak to you guys and provide you just a high-level recap of our cost of service study. I certainly am aware that Matt has shared information with you guys and all you guys have been aware that we've been going through this cost of service study. It's been about a year now since we started this. We started this about mid-year twenty twenty-two, and obviously we're in August of this year. So it's been a year in the making. We went through, kind of giving you just a little bit of history, the utilities, as I know you guys have gone through cost of service studies here on your utility side as well. We go through a cost of service study about every five years. Unless we see that there's major concerns or major issues with usage or consumption or financial constraints. So we're on a five-year schedule. This is the second go-around of our cost of service study this time around. If you guys recall, first time we did our cost of service study, we did implement rate adjustments over four-year period. And at that time, we did the last cost of service study back in two thousand seventeen eighteen. Really, the crux of that cost of service study was really staying revenue neutral, meaning we didn't need to generate any more revenue. But we just needed to realign our customer classes, making sure that every customer class paid their fair share of what it costs for the utility operate. This time around, this cost of service study, the commission was charged with looking at something for the first time that we haven't really had to look at since two thousand and six. We're going on seventeen years, and that is really, particularly on the electric side, that our costs on the electric side are going up quicker than the revenue that we're able to collect. So this time around, they've actually had to look at increasing the rates for the first time. They start moving us towards our cost of service study. So I'll talk a little bit about that and show you the kind of recap as you move forward. So, but I also want to give you guys just a high-level overview and a point that the commission took this stuff very seriously. They did their homework. They did who did jail, and they asked a lot of questions. We had the consultant come out, provide his feedback. And so they did not take these conversations, these decisions lightly in their endeavor to make sure that they're keeping the utility financially healthy, both on the gas division and the electric division, and making sure that we made our obligations, not only from a debt perspective, but for a pilot for the city and for those other things that we need to keep in place. So with that, just kind of a high-level overview of recap, this first slide really is kind of the results of the electric division cost of service study. Keep in mind, all these cost of service study numbers are from our two thousand twenty-one's financial statements. So we're already a year past that, and I can tell you, our costs haven't gone down since two thousand twenty-one. They're actually exponentially going up faster. If you guys have read anything or have been aware of what's going on in the energy industry, we have costs going up on transformers, conductors, not ten or twenty percent, but fifty, sixty, a hundred percent. So a transformer that used to cost us three thousand dollars, you know, ten years ago, or eight years ago, or five years ago, now costs us thirty to forty. So we're seeing significant inflation on that side, and the economy, supply chains, all those things are making an impact, renewables, things of that nature. But high-level overview on the cost of service study, what came out of it was really to run the electric division, you can see that the cost of service from our two thousand twenty-one's financials was it costs us the utility twenty-eight point three million dollars to run the electric utility and to provide services to all the customers in town. What our projected revenue was and what it came out to be relative to our cost of service study was, we're only generating about twenty-five point four million. So we have a three million dollar gap on the electric division. We've been, we've had showing of net loss on the electric vision for years, so we're not covering all of our depreciation, we're covering a portion of it. We're cash flowing on that side, but we also have major big projects coming up that I'll touch on that is going to significantly deplete cash balances in that side. So we really need to start to move down the path of replenishing cash balances as we make major capital purchases, but then also move down the path of generating additional revenue to cover. Just our operating costs are going up substantially. So really, at the end of the day, on the electric side, what that shows is we've got about a three million dollar deficit from a cat from the cost of service, which is about just over eleven percent that we're away from what it costs to operate the utility to what we're generating revenue. So the consultant was charged with providing us several options to look at as a way to look at the impact. So when you look at that right column in the first table, you'll see the percent change, and really what that should be telling the council and the people at home is which classes are the furthest away from really covering their own costs. And as you can see in that, our two biggest classes are our residential customers and our small general customers. They're fifteen to eighteen percent away from really covering their fair share of what it costs the utility. The larger customers, large general, which is our larger manufacturing, larger businesses, and then our industrial class, which is a couple, they're a little bit closer to cost of service, but there's still a little bit of ways that we know we need to bridge some of those gaps. So the consultant provided us three options, option A, option B, and option C. The commission wanted to go with option B, which was the middle of the road. And their intention behind that was that we need to start moving the classes that are further away from cost of service a little quicker than the ones that are closer to cost of service study. So with direct intention, they said, well, let's still go with option B, but also understanding that we don't want to over, you know, collect in a shorter amount of time. So, so what they proposed and what the consultant proposed and what the commission ultimately recommended was going with option B, which is a two and a half percent increase overall for the entire electric division. But by each class on the residential side, we're going to be collecting three point seven percent more per year. Three point six for the small general, one point nine for the large customers as we move forward. So, so that's kind of where they stood as far as from a collection standpoint. The other piece that's important for the council to know is that it doesn't get us to the cost of service study. It starts moving us towards that. So, and that's usually been a conservative approach by the consultant is, we know you can't get there all at once, but you got to keep moving the needle a little bit. And so I anticipate when we get the next cost of service study done in two thousand, in five years, that we're going to see similar results because we're not trying to get there all in the next five years, but we got to start moving incrementally. So that's how the electric division played out. The gas side was in a better position with some of the restructuring we did with the first cost of service study. So in the same table, the residential and the commercial were fairly close to cost of service. So the commission decided we don't really need to adjust anything with the residential and the commercial customers on the gas side. And then the only customer class that really had a little bit of discrepancy was the large general class. And there's only three customers in that class, and two of them are contract customers. They're not even on a retail rate schedule. And so they're two and a half percent off, so the consultant recommended that you start incrementally moving it for a tenth of a percent to start moving us towards cost of service study. So on the gas side, it's a very different story. We're really not looking to make any changes. We readjusted things the last time around. So we're sitting good on that side. So taking a little, just a little quick deeper dive, what that means from a revenue standpoint is if you look at, this is the electric division, the next three years, what overall two point four, three percent increase for the electric side equates to is it generates about six hundred and thirty to forty thousand more dollars a year in revenue to start moving us that way. So keep in mind that we're three million away from cost of service, so over three years, we'll cover half of that. You know, with about one point eight million coming in when we really should be at three. So again, the theme is we're not trying to get there all in three years. We're incrementally moving. So that's kind of how that plays out, and I just wanted to give you a snippet of the revenue impact per class. So first, first year, the example of residential, it would generate roughly two hundred and twenty thousand, or when the residential class, the small general, sixty-six thousand, the large general, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and then the large industrial, a hundred and eighty-two thousand. And then we incrementally increase on the security lights a little bit. So that would be the impact on the electric side with the breakdown of where the revenues, the increases are coming from. On the natural gas side, because there isn't really any major changes, really, the real major changes with our contract customers, our two big customers that we have contracts with, and one of them is really the biggest customer we have, we're looking to tweak a little bit of that when their contracts come around next year. So they won't even take effect this year when their contracts are renewed. And that would generate, you know, with our biggest customer, you know, nineteen thousand dollars an increase where you can see the residential is basically a minimal impact, and then the industrial and commercial classes, zero. So not, again, not a real big, there's really no impact on the natural gas except for our contract customers. And then, as you can see, and I think I did have Matt send you the resolution that we adopted, this is just kind of the summary of, you know, the various components that are in that resolution. You know, we're modestly moving the monthly charge to make sure that the monthly charge that we're charging is, you know, leveling out with what our fixed charge, fixed costs are to have a minimum system in place. So you can see the kind of the rate annual increase from the different levels as you can move forward. So in some instances, we were moving the monthly charge and the energy charge up. In some instances, we may be moving the monthly charge but lowering the energy charge to really get us to the percent increase that we need to collect from each of those classes to get us moving towards the direction that the commission wanted to go. So this is kind of a summary of the resolution. And then I also have included, because what's important for you guys to know and important for the viewers at home is what type of impact, you know, does a rate increase have on me? So this is the residential, the electric side, which is where the impact is for the residential customers, because again, there's no impact on the gas side. So I highlighted in red, the seven fifty, that's about our average usage for our customers, residential customers. And our residential customers are usually about ninety-five percent of our entire customers, so it's the bulk of our customer class. So on an average, average usage, if you look at, I kind of look at these, these bottom to, you know, with some of that's average usage of seven hundred and fifty kilowatt hours, their increase is going to be three point nine percent over this year. So what that equates to really down in a dollar, which is the bottom table, is around three dollars a month more of an increase that they're going to get on average. And you can see if you're a low user, if you don't use as much energy, maybe you're in an apartment, or it's, you know, two people living in a home, you may have a dollar impact per month on your bill. If you're a large user like I am, I'm over a thousand because I have a family of five and kids, and they leave the lights on, you know, I might, mine might be five dollars more. So there's been a conscious effort to minimize as much impact as possible, even with big users, understanding the small users. And then you can see that would be a dollar increase per year, so as we move forward. So, and then on the small general, our average kind of usage with the small, smaller customers in town, you know, a lot of people, a lot of businesses on Main Street, a lot of the smaller business users of energy, really what that equates to is about a six dollar, you know, six to seven dollar a month increase on an average, on the average. If you use more, you're in the small general class, but you use more, it might be nine dollars a month if you're on the lower end of, of a business. It may be three dollars. So the range is kind of a three to nine dollar based on kind of your range. And then on the natural gas side, our average consumption, MCF consumption is six MCF. So really, because we're really not changing the class, we are readjusting some of the rate components. We're adding, we're increasing the monthly cut charge on the residential class, but we're reducing the energy charge, so there's a zero impact. You'll actually see for, if you're a low user of gas, your bill may go up eighteen cents. But if you're an average user, you actually see a two cent reduction in your bill. And if you're a bigger user, which we do have some people in the ten to eleven MCF, they might see a fifty cent decrease. So there is a little bit of variance between the class because we're increasing the monthly charge but reducing the energy charge. So the more consumption you have, the better it benefits you, and the less consumption you have, you don't, so. And then the commercial, natural gas, again, really a dollar impact, or if you're at a forty percent or forty MCF, and if you're at fifty, it's a minus a dollar seventy-three. So it's kind of a neutral kind of impact on that. Any questions before I kind of show you, any questions on any of that stuff?
No.
Okay. The other piece I just wanted to reiterate, because the commission spends a lot of time on making sure that we're, our rates, first and foremost, we have good reliability in town, and second of all, that our rates are competitive, that we are trying to do everything we can to generate revenue outside of retail rates to operate and try to keep our rates competitive. So this is one benchmark we use with a lot of our peers in the state, and this, this information plays out with national information. So we've gone through the last years of benchmark and our rates nationally to not only municipal utilities, but investor-owned utilities and co-ops. And the same percentages bear themselves out, so I didn't provide you a bunch of the national stuff. But this is a good illustration of a lot of our peers, a lot of our regional centers. As you can see, we've been tracking this with Oletan on these, and other counterparts. Actually, more than two thousand eighteen, but this is what fits well on the graph. But you can see Hutchinson, we're the light blue, and we've been the lowest of our peer groups. I can tell you've been the lowest probably in the last fifteen years. And we're typically twenty to twenty-five percent lower on residential rates than any, anyone on that show find, and that's been consistent. We've constantly kept our rates down. We generate sources through natural gas transmission, through market purchases, market sales, tolling arrangements. So, you know, we're at the bottom of the residential class. This is just kind of a graph that kind of show, illustrates the same thing. So we're twenty-two percent below the average of our peer groups here on the residential side. So even with a two, you know, a three point seven percent increase, you know, that equates to a little over eleven percent over the next three years, we're still eleven percent below today's numbers, and these guys are raising their rates as well. So we're never going to catch them, even with increases, because they're doing the same thing. So we're going to continually stay at the bottom of our peer group. But it just, it's an illustration of how competitive our residential rates are relative to people not only locally, but in the Midwest and nationally. Same thing that on the commercial side with the electric rates, we're at the bottom, again, of a lot of our peer groups. Here's a, you know, here's a graph illustrating Hutchinson, you know, on a, on a current average. You know, we're at the bottom relative to the, the current average is fifty, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Again, that's twenty-two percent below, so we're twenty-two percent below on the commercial class as well from the average peer group. The industrial class, we're not at the bottom, but we're pretty close to the bottom. We're a third from the bottom on our peer group. Still about twelve, thirteen percent below peer group, but we are still on the bottom third of industrial class on the electric side. So that, and so that, again, that's really where some of those increases, you know, even if, even when they come, we're still well below peer groups. And then on the gas side, I think it's, we always look at the gas as well. When we did our last restructuring of our last four years, we actually gained some ground because we restructured and we brought down the energy charge on the gas side because we didn't need to collect as, as much with some of the other things that we've been doing and generating revenue. So we've gone over a couple of years from being a little bit higher on the residential side, so now we're at the bottom, we're second to the bottom. So we've adjusted that through the, the rate adjustments the last time. So this is the gas division's residential customer class or residential class. And then with our commercial and industrial classes for the gas, we're right at, right at just below average, right at, you know, right in the middle of our peer groups. And that also plays out fairly consistently with national information. We're not high, we're not low, we're right in the middle of where, of where we need to be. So there isn't a whole lot of adjustments or things that need to be made there. And then this is the industrial class gas, we're right in the middle of our peer group. And there isn't a whole lot of change between really these, these middle four, it's fairly close. It's, they jump up when you start getting into some of the kind of industrial and gas areas where they jump up. A lot of it's partly with the transmission, because there's a lot more transmission costs that they have to pay than we do because we own our transmission lines. So there's some things that change. And then this was just really the resolution that you guys received that was adopted. So the rates, in the summary, is what's in this resolution. And then the only other piece that I would mention down here is we're cleaning up the security lights as well. We've been replacing all the security lights in town with LED over time. So we're cleaning up that as we're readjusting rates to say, we don't longer have the halogen or any those types of lights. We're all fully going to be implemented with LED, and we do need to make a modest increase on the security lights because they're significantly more expensive than the old lights. So that's what I have in a kind of a quick overview of information.
Mayor Council, one of the reasons, obviously, we have Jeremy down here to kind of present this is that, you know, there's two, there's two controls, if you want to say, that the city council has. One is to appoint the utility board, and the second is you do have veto authority on any rate, rate increases. And so what you'll see, and what we've generally done from the council standpoint, is that we'll, we'll have a resolution one way or the other to, if you want to say formally approve or put their blessing on the proposed rate changes. And so that will be on your, on your next agenda, but it gives you an opportunity to obviously hear what, what's behind the rate increases, and if you had any desires to to veto that, obviously, to express that. Otherwise, we'd be looking for the council to, I guess, formally place their blessing on the proposed changes at your next meeting.
Any questions from?
I think if I was to make a statement, I've heard other communities talking about the, I actually expected a much larger increase, as weird as it sounds, because I've seen what other communities are doing. And I appreciate the electric commission, you know, the commission looking at this and, and keeping it within and looking forward. Maybe it's just a positive thing. We expect increases, especially with service supply right now. That you've kept it to this, I'm pretty pleased with seeing that.
I think it's also important to note, it's been seventeen, seventeen years, which is pretty remarkable as well.
Yeah, and I think the other piece for you guys to know is, part of it, obviously, we look at our cash balance and our cash flow and where that's going. And I know you guys know that we have some huge projects coming up. You know, we've got the Hudge substation, that's going to be a ten to twelve million dollar project. That's going to be a regional benefit for resiliency and grid stability. So we'll recapture that money over time through the market, but that, that's a lead, you know, that's a lead time, you know, that's ten, fifteen years that we're going to be recovering over time. And the more we can pay with cash for that, the more money we get back from the market. So there's that piece of, and those are ones that will be fifty-year, forty-year projects. And then the other big piece that we're going to look to use cash on is we have our big engine, our LM six thousand coming out, and we expect that to be in the range of two to three million dollar, you know, repairs and fixes. So we're also using a lot of capital cash that we typically don't need to because we do maintain our system well. But when these projects come up and we can get a return on investment, we'll look to do those. The piece that's really still undecided from the commission is until we get all the bids back on the substation, we're not going to fully know if we can pay for it without cash, or we have to do some financing. So that's still on the air. We're out for bids, at least for the big portion of it right now, which is the transformer on that. So, so that also is playing into making sure that we're staying cash healthy and meeting debt coverages, and you guys know all about that stuff, so. But.
Thank you.
Well, I did have somebody ask me about the solar panels up there. Jeremy, how, how are those? How are they performing for you guys? Do you know?
Yeah, I do know. They're performing well. Yeah, so when we, when we went and built that project, so typically in Minnesota, you get a fourteen to fifteen percent capacity factor. So that's what you can expect out of a solar array because it's cloudy, we get winters here. So our last, our fullest last year of two thousand twenty-two, it actually ran at eighteen percent. So it's, it's done well. So that saved us about fifty-two thousand dollars in energy costs by putting that in. So, so it's been performing well to date. We haven't had any problems with any inverters, major problems that we addressed. So it's been working well up there for the size that it is. You know, it's not an end-all. I mean, it's, it's a smaller system, but at least it gives us a start moving towards carbon free and some of that renewable, so. But it's been working well.
Thanks. Anything else for Jeremy?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, let me know if you have any more questions.
All right, moving on. We don't have any unfinished business, new business, resolution number one, five, six, one, three. Resolution authorizing. One three, resolution authorizing issuance of one million four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. General obligation bonds series twenty-three, twenty twenty-three eight.
Good evening here, council members, so as you know, each year we issue debt by selling bonds. And uh those bonds finance a portion of our annual roadway uh roadway improvements. The council gave their approval back in July, July eleventh, actually. Um, basically give the approval for LRS to solicit bids for our bonds, and that's why we're here tonight, we're gonna. Review uh the results of the bond sale. So usually we have Nick Anhut here, he couldn't make it tonight, so instead we have Bruce Kimmel. And maybe Gary, you might remember Bruce, but for years Bruce was our senior municipal advisor with LRS, he. He helped us with our bond issuances prior to Nick, so he did many of our bond issuances, so we have Bruce here tonight. And uh I'll turn it over to him, but just so you know, um, we're both here to answer questions after he's done. And then there's some paperwork that I do need Gary and Matt to sign for Bruce to take back with him.
I'm sure Nick didn't come because he couldn't promise the one percent interest rates.
I I think Bruce has the the better deal tonight, I don't think Nick's having too much fun.
I think Nick couldn't follow the detours, he probably would have got lost.
Mayor, he told me that he did get uh turned around and was late last last time, so. Made sure I gave myself plenty of time to get here. Well, it's great to be back with you here in Hutchinson, Bruce Kimmel with others, it's a pleasure to present these bond sale results. I won't go into too much detail, but we did take bids on the city's behalf at nine thirty this morning and received five bids. Uh, for the city, and what was interesting is that all five bids were within nine basis points or point zero nine percent. Of each other, so really aggressive bidding from first to fifth place in terms of trying to buy these bids. The winning bid was TD Securities out of New York City, um TD is Toronto Dominion, it's the, you know, TD Ameritrade. Which I guess now is Charles Schwab, but they uh are very aggressive bidders, so I wasn't at all surprised to see them come through as the winning bid on this sale. It seems like almost every sale recently has been won by TD Securities. One thing I should should mention just off at the outset, because you will notice this in the um sale resolution, is that. Because of the premium bid that TD bid for the city's bonds. We were able to reduce the amount of the bonds from one million four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So a hundred and five thousand dollar difference, and that's been reflected in the sale resolution that Dorsey and Whitney prepared. Um, following today's sale. See if there's anything else significant here on this, on the s- sale results. I don't think so, the uh the last thing then gentlemen that I wanted to cover was the city's credit rating with standard and pores, as is normally the case. Uh, your city team did have a discussion with S and P about the city's finances, your economy, all sorts of things. And you once again passed with flying colors uh in affirming the city's double A minus credit rating with S and P. Um, really, the only thing they said that could cause your rating to suffer would be if you really saw a huge decline in the city's fin- financial performance. Uh, you started running massive deficits and started uh draining fund balances, and as you know, both through your leadership. And your staff's guidance, that's not very likely to happen, so a really good result and kudos to. Uh, Andy, where'd he go? There he is. Sitting in the back row is normal uh in in um doing the ho- the homework for that, it's not easy to. To prepare answers to all their questions as well as to do all the work that's needed for the official statement for the bond issue itself, so. As usual, that went really smoothly, working with the city of Hutchinson. Um, I would welcome any questions you have about the sale results, the interest rate, which was lower than our projected interest rate, or about the credit rating.
So what were the actual interest rates, I don't know if we got those, Andy, so.
Yeah, I can give the the uh result, thanks for mentioning that, I usually point that out and I gloss right over it. So the low bid from TD Securities was three point five eight percent. And the high bid was three point six seven percent, so you can see that it's that nine basis point difference from start to finish.
Is that about usual, what, five five bids, or is there usually more?
Uh, no, at this size of bond issue, we're always really happy if we get five or more. Excuse me, it can vary from day to day and week to week in the market. Um, typically larger issues get more bidders, but on the other hand, you're issuing more debt, right? And so there's the trade off there, but given how tightly packed these five were, we feel very confident that you caught the market where I was at. And did very well relative to our estimates earlier.
What was our original thought, uh, or estimate for the interest rate, um?
I I think we were a little below three point six um on the pre-sale report. I I think Nick and I were thinking anywhere between three five and three seven five would be.
Sure.
A decent rate, yeah.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Well, I would encourage you to take up the resolution, right, is that the next step?
Entertainer motion.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve resolution one five six one three, authorizing issuance of one million three hundred and some thousand dollars. In obligation bonds, general obligation bonds, second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve resolution number one five six one three. Any other discussion? Come on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Full C N A, motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I need you to sign that real quick. Andy, you need to sit back, room, check this, okay.
All righty, moving on, uh. Mid-key development proposal and first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eight four one. Sale of municipal home property miles.
Okay, good evening, uh, mayor and council, just a very quick little item here for you tonight, we're gonna. Talk about uh a proposal for development of a city-owned lot. And then um if that gets approved, then it would be just the first reading of the ordinance to sell that lot to the proposed developer, so. Just a quick little bit of background here, uh, back in twenty twenty-one, the city purchased what used to be known as the Franklin Group Home. Um, and it was a, an area that needed to be um improved, it was kind of run down, so. Um, the opportunity arose and and uh we agreed to buy that building back in twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-two, that building was removed, actually turned out to be the barn that was at the. That started out at the Harrington Merrill Place, so Historic Hutchinson moved that building out, and then we demoed out the rest. And then we were left with a bare lot, approximately one-third of an acre to redevelop, so then we put together a request for proposals. Circulated that to see who would uh be interested and received a couple of proposals, but the one that was uh clearly. Uh, head and shoulders above came from Midwest Industrial Tool Grinding. They actually put forward a proposal to uh build four townhomes or row homes on it. On that lot, and you can see the site plan there on the screen, so basically before these townhomes. Two-story structure that would face toward the river, there would be a balcony in front of each or a deck or whatever. Um, I think two-bedroom units and and pretty nice, uh, pretty high-end, I guess, that they would have. So I think their initial thought was that these would be leased out, um although I think the company might retain. Control of one in case they have visiting uh customers or executives or whatever, then they would have a place to put them. Um, so that might be part of that, so overall, it's almost one point six million dollar project. Um, as I mentioned, a pretty high-end kind of development for that site. Um, here's kind of a a preliminary idea of what the floor plans would be, so there'd be a garage that you would drive in. On the backside, coming off of the alley, and then uh there would be a bedroom on the ground level, and then. A bedroom and a living area and the deck up on the second level, so the pictures here, they're just sort of conceptual. It's not gonna look exactly like that, but they just gave us those pictures to give us an idea of kind of where they wanted to go with the design of it. So, when the city bought the lot with the old house on it, it had an estimated market value of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. With this new development, um, the new market value would be about nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so that'd be over five times. Increase in valuation, and then um the reason that's important is that. We have a Tiff district set up in that area, so we're gonna capture the property taxes generated by this project. That will allow the city to reimburse itself for the original purchase price and cleanup of that lot. So we're gonna get ourselves made whole, and we're gonna have a nice new development in that area, so. E D A board reviewed it, um, they agreed it was the highest and the best use of that site. Um, it'll be a good match for the development that'll happen across the street to the west with Uptown Grand. And I think that the row homes, the townhomes will be a nice asset to the downtown, it's really just gonna improve the look of that whole area. So if the council approves, then uh MITGI would move forward with construction next year. So, I think that's pretty much it, what we're requesting tonight, if it uh meets your approval, would be just approval of the proposal. From MITGI, and then we would uh do the first reading of the ordinance and we would move this forward, so any questions about anything?
When does he plan on starting, and when do they plan on starting?
Um, I think they would do the design process and go through the site plan approval process over the winter, and then construction would be next summer. Yep.
Any other questions for Miles? Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve uh ordinance number two three dash eight four one.
I will second it.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by myself, any other discussion? Come on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Miles. Sending out requests for proposal for fixed base operator for Butler Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so, um. Mike Stifler couldn't be here tonight, so I'm gonna be handling this for um the public works department, but. Uh, regardless, the Hutchinson Airport, like most airports that have any amount of um consistent airplane traffic. Has what's called a fixed base operator, and a fixed base operator is a company or an individual. Um, that is at the airport to provide services for transient aircraft that come and go. Um, to provide services like fueling, aircraft maintenance, hangar hang of airplanes. Uh, tie-down of airplanes, things of that nature. And uh the fixed base operator also um provides routine maintenance to the terminal at the airport. And some basic snow removal and landscaping duties, and the Hutchinson Airport has had a fixed base operator agreement. With a company called ASI Jet for the last ten years or so. And that agreement is coming to an end next June, June first of twenty twenty-four. At the last Hutchinson Airport's commission, the commission voted to uh go out for proposals for. Um, potentially a new uh fixed base operator. And included in your packet is uh the document that they would hope to send out to individuals or companies to solicit proposals. To serve as the fixed base operator for the Hutchinson Airport. As you might have seen in that document, it talks about uh the qualifications that they would be looking for in the fixed base operator. Uh, there's a schedule in there about how the proposals would be solicited and evaluated, determined, and then finally. The um winning proposer would be selected. Um, talks about the duties that the fixed base operator would be expected to uh undertake if they were selected. Um, I think it's also mentioned in the document, it talks about how ultimately the city would be coming to a decision. Probably in mid to late January for the council to consider. Um, and so, um, the airport commission's request, as well as staff's, is that. Uh, you approve the commission's request to go out for proposals for the next fixed base operator contract.
I would make a motion that we approve the RFP for Butler Field. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve sending out for RFP for. Butler Field. Any other discussion? Come on, favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Lee, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, sitting council back at workshop, uh, one for August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three at four P M. To review preliminary capital improvement plan, and September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. At four P M to review preliminary budget and tax levy.
And may I, council, we'll get into that, we're not everybody at season, so I just ask that you set the next two workshops.
Motion approved. Second.
Second.
You've got it.
Motion by Tim, second by Pat to set those two workshops, any other discussion? Come on, favor say aye.
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 Full C N A, motion carries. Uh, twelve point five uh approval of emergency replacement of metering base sense. System in north and south water towers.
Yeah, mayor and council, um, this last month, uh, for utility billing, we ran into issues of being able to collect it remotely. Um, and I think through some work, we found out that the the equipment was damaged, we think there potentially was a lightning strike. Um, that took that out, and and of course, kind of like everything else, the the equipment's now obsolete, and so you can't get. Um, replacement parts, so we're in need of going out and getting um some new equipment, so we received a quote for seventy-three thousand six hundred dollars. Um, actually, a good portion of that will be covered by Hutch Utilities because they use it for their gas and electric. Um, and so with that, um, and wanting to get ahead of, especially with the lead times, we add that to the agenda tonight, asking you for to consider that proposal.
Man, I noticed it says, um, like the, um, the stuff we have is obsolete, and it says that. This new stuff will last for several years, is that kind of caught piqued my interest? I don't quite know it's.
I think that's what the companies tell us, right, Andy?
I mean, it it, I don't wanna spend money, but if if we do this, then.
Yeah, this was jammed together literally ten minutes before the meeting, or, so that was my terminology, it's not exact. I'm hoping it would be a good fifteen to twenty years, but with technology, you just never know these days. And and the one thing I did want to point out, just for those maybe listening at home, uh, since we weren't able to gather the reads as of. July thirty-first, July twenty-second was the date we could go back to to get actually get actual reads, so. The July bills are only through the twenty-second, which will be a little lighter than they normally would have been. But then when it comes time for the August bill, those August bills unfortunately will be a little higher to make up for. Uh, the partial month of July, so I just wanted to point that out for those listening.
So we can expect constituents here at the September.
Is there any uh insurance on that? That's something we'll.
Yeah, we'll take a look into that, or deductible's twenty-five thousand, so this one help a little, but yeah, we don't know for sure if it's. Like a lightning strike or not, I I think that was our initial assumption, but now they're thinking it's maybe just a. Memory card within the unit that went bad.
No, I sure was a.
Positive of lightning strike, Andy.
I think I saw it.
That is something we definitely are gonna look into.
Okay, all right, thanks. Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve the emergency replacement of meter reading base census system.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave. Any other discussion? Come on, favor say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Alrighty, we have uh seven minutes. We have the library board minutes from June twenty sixth, two thousand twenty three. The Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three. The City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Revest- Investment Report for June of twenty twenty three. Chief Gripperson. Anything?
I have nothing.
Could you just touch on electric bikes? A little bit and. I've had a few calls of people talking about electric bikes zooming by them on the trails and I told them that. They can be on the trails. But I, I mean, I I guess a little discussion with you before, but. You know, maybe we could have the electric bike owners have a little better etiquette for the trail.
Yeah, Mayor Council, thank you. Uh. Exactly right. Um, I I just a quick overview, there's three classes of electric bikes or e-bikes. Um they're electric assisted bicycles technically. Um, first two classes, and again, you just caught me at the beginning of the meeting, so I'll go from recollection. I think it's up to twenty miles per hour they can travel. Um, and then a class three e-bike is twenty eight miles per hour. Um, so you can imagine twenty eight miles per hour on a bike trails moving right along. Um, and uh or a sidewalk or any of that thing type of thing. So. My advice would be um for e-bikes to stay off the sidewalks especially, cuz they're pretty narrow. Um, and even a a regular bicycle, my recommendation would be either bike trails or the roadway, not sidewalks. It's just a much safer way to travel on a with a bicycle. Um, all that being said, um the state does not allow. Class three e-bikes on state trails. So on the, if you're on the loose line. And you're have a class three bicycle, um you shouldn't be there. The hard part is it's almost impossible to enforce. Because unless you stop the person and or take a close look at their e-bike and they have a little. Decal on there that says it's a class three bicycle and not a class one or class two. Class one, class two are easy to determine because one has pedals and one does not. Um, but a class three looks just like a class two, other than the fact it goes seven miles per hour faster or eight miles per hour faster. So um the discussion the mayor and I had prior to the meeting was. Um, ultimately, the city council can um. Create an ordinance that, you know, either prohibits uh class three. On any bicycle trail. Um, but. Um for the most part, it's really about etiquette of the riders and um. And sharing the the trails with pedestrians and re- regular bicycles, that type of thing. Um, and probably one of the easiest uh pieces of etiquette that they can use is have a bell on their bicycle. Ring it prior to approaching pedestrians from the rear, letting them know that you're passing them on the left before you approach them now. At twenty miles per hour, that approaches rather quickly. Uh but. Again, that's the same etiquette that we would ask bicyclists to use as well, so. Um, so for members of the community that have been surprised by e-bikes. Um, who's, at least their perception is anyway that they were almost run over. Um, you know, that's a valid concern and really what it relies on is just mutual respect between pedestrians and. Bicyclists or e-bicyclists and just a little bit of extra uh etiquette on on their part would go a long way.
So the class three is not legal on the state?
True. Correct.
I don't have one, but I I didn't realize there was a restriction.
Yeah, the state, the state of Minnesota is on a state trail, so the loose line would be the only one that's affected in the city of Hutchinson, but.
Yeah, I mean, I guess those are, I mean, I think for the comments you may be hearing, Mayor or other members of the council, you really, your option is to eliminate. E-bicycles, bicycles on trails. If you wanted to create that ordinance, you know, I think we start getting into. Legislating adequate etiquette and we all know, I don't know, that. That's a, it's a difficult proposition for for the for the city, but that's really the the option that you would have was would be to create an ordinance that would. Prohibit e-bicyclists on trails and sidewalks. Then that becomes a whole nother enforcement issue for.
And I think, and maybe Mark can help me out on this, but I think. E-bicyclists or e-bikes have statutorily have the same right as regular bicycles. So it would be, you would have to. Get rid of all bicycles on the trails, not just e-bikes.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, but I, but I think.
Well, Chad's not here, let's just.
Yeah. But truly, I think, you know, the safer place for any bicycle is off sidewalks. On the right hand side of the roadway, obey the rules of the road, and that's gonna be your best bet. Um, especially if you're, you have a e-bike that's capable of traveling at twenty eight miles per hour. You probably don't have any business being on a narrow bike trail anyway, if you're gonna be traveling at that speed.
Well, trouble with e-bikes, they're kinda stealthy. I mean, they're, they're silent. I mean, you know. Come up behind you and they're by you before you even know it.
That's why I like gas power, you can hear it now.
Well, um, you know, and uh maybe a suggestion would be another unenforceable ordinance and just put a speed limit on. I mean, snowmobiles can only travel ten miles per hour in town on the trail. So why would you allow a bicycle?
Maybe we have to, so I'm dating myself, but you used to take a clothespin and a card.
At least you could hear him coming, right?
Yeah, but they only have like five spokes on the tire.
Alright, thank you.
While I'm up here.
Anything else for?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I just think education is still a big thing.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
Alright, thank you. Uh Kelly, you have anything for us? Andy, anything else? Mark, you got anything for us tonight?
Tonight?
Alrighty, well, it's supposed to be Chad, but yeah, Chad don't wanna say anything. Be quiet for once. Uh, Tim?
Relay for Life was wonderful this past weekend. Uh I've seen so many things at Masonic West Park. I don't think I can keep up with them with the pottery and all that other. Events going and when people say that Hutchinson doesn't have much to, much going on. Uh get involved, there's a lot going on and it's wonderful things, so thanks to the community for those events.
I think what is, is it the Garlic Festival this weekend?
I think.
That's what's this weekend?
Orange.
Especially at the VFW who uh. I know the wives are involved in it and uh Dave's gonna be at a birthday party, so.
Should go back and say thank you to everybody who attended the National Night Out uh and watched the mayor swim. Uh and get docked a few times, so.
A few times. Nice hills, nice. Thanks, Steve. Anything else, Steve?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
I didn't get to my local national idol, but I did go and check them all out. And it was the Grace Lutheran was, I think. Yeah, and I went to Elks Park, you know, there was a number there, went to North High and there was a number there and I didn't know the fourth one. I missed where that one was, but.
So you have one thing, Colly Fair is on uh.
Morgan, how was the pottery festival? I confess I did not get there.
Record turnout.
Good.
Thirty five hundred people came through the gate.
Nice.
Good.
Nice.
Wonderful. Anything else, Pat?
Man. Um, couple things. First off, uh the DMV has officially moved. Um, that they opened their their new location on Monday. It's adjacent to the new. Police station, they face Jefferson. I know we've had a couple people say, oh, isn't that the new police station? Yes, it's the two different, the two buildings, two separate locations. Well, um the police are on what, First Avenue and uh DMV is on Jefferson, so they are at their new location officially started this past Monday. Um, this question came up a couple weeks ago and I and I misspoke, I didn't realize, but there is, uh in regards to the community survey. There is an act, there actually is gonna be an open portion of that survey where the entire public will be able to fill it out. Um, and that opens Friday, that will be through social media. Um, we'll send that out. Um, and so they'll be kept. They'll track that separate from the the more professional or the scientific one, uh but there will be an option. Uh people will have to to sign in, have to, I think, include email and their zip code um to do it. Um, and so that will go out Friday afternoon sometime. And then um I saw that Lynn left, uh the pool will be closing on August eighteenth. Um, that's the last day that'll be open. They'll actually start doing some reduced hours on the Monday, the fourteenth. So the third, August thirteenth will be their last kind of a full schedule and then uh so then starting next week, they'll have more of a reduced schedule. And then we'll be closing on the eighteenth. And I know it comes up every single year, but when ninety nine percent of your workforce is. High school students and college students, um high school sports start next week and so we lose. About seventy five percent of our workforce right when that happens, so that's why we can't keep it open longer, so.
Matt, when you mentioned the DMV, I see, do they still do testing here?
Testing will be here still, at least for the probably the next month. Yeah, right here in this building, so.
They do the driving from here to.
Yeah, yeah, um hopefully eventually, maybe the next couple months, that will move over to the new location as well, but for right now, it will continue to do that here. That's it for me.
That's it?
I do have one question, Mayor. On uh August thirtieth, there's uh Hutchinson Trail Care Coalition, Community in Action is open house on uh the thirtieth. So if more than. Three of us are involved, we need to be.
Yeah, we need to post that, so if more, just let me know if if they're, if you're planning on attending that, cuz then we can make sure we at least get that posted, so.
Into my question.
That's the end. Till next time.
I think I'm maybe done.
Um, I know I I brought it up last time or last meeting about the cannabis. Um. I guess uh I kinda was talking with Matt a little bit here, but uh. I think uh I guess what, what's the council's feelings on uh what we should put in place? Uh personally, I think that we kinda should maybe try to piggyback the tobacco use part of it where. Um, you know, where tobacco use is prohibited, I think the cannabis should be the same and I don't know. Matt, uh Mark, I guess uh kinda looking towards you, maybe just to see what do you think?
Maybe Mark and I tag team this. First off, um I'm hoping, I'm hoping everybody had an opportunity, I sent out the leak, but. They still have another, they put a really good kinda press release out there with frequently asked questions about what cities can and can't do. Like I said last time, there's really a couple options that we have. We can regulate where people can smoke. We can regulate the location of the facilities, so whether they're either selling it, manufacturing it. Um, we can regulate the amount of those. Facilities and then we can regulate whether or not we wanna get into the business. For the most part, that's about all that we have for regulation. I just, so I want the public to be very clear, this is what was adopted by state law. If they've got concerns. The best people to talk to is with their legislators. Now, in regards to our smoking, um. And I wasn't here at the time, but Mark was, so it's to the genius of those that created the ordinance. Um, our ordinance for smoking currently lists. Um weed and plant type of smoking, so marijuana would fall under that. So with that, and that current ordinance basically says you can't smoke within fifteen feet of an entrance, an exit, an air intake.
For pub- for public places, right? It's very similar to the Minnesota Indoor Clean Air Act.
Would it in regards, so that would, okay, never mind, not even gonna ask it.
You wanna share, so. You know, currently under our ordinance, we talk about um smoking not only in this, um. As I said, like the Clean Indoor Act ordinance is, I guess what I'll call it. We also have, um. Tobacco free zones in our parks, or some of our parks. Uh for example, VMF, Tartan, I think the ball fields at Roberts. Uh maybe one or two other places where tobacco use as a whole is prohibited. So chewing tobacco, smoking, et cetera. Um. The state law does allow us to regulate. The use of cannabis products in public areas. So if that's something the council wanted to do, um again, as the mayor brought up about piggybacking with the tobacco ordinance. We could um have tobacco use similarly restricted as we do tobacco products, for example, in those parks. Um, but really, as Matt alluded to at the beginning, beginning of the discussion. Uh, we'd be looking for you for some direction as far as doing that or just uh prohibiting it in any public place. Um, or doing nothing.
My feeling is going along with what the current uh smoking. Thing is, but I think we should act on it pretty fast since it's legal to use it now and. I mean, I don't think we should really wait a long time. I I think we should get on this. That's me.
So you were saying, Matt, that it does save weed.
So this is our definition of smoking in our ordinance. It says inhaling, exhaling or combustion of any tobacco product, weed, plant. Or any other similar article, including as any cigar, cigarette pipe, or any other similar articles. So our definition of smoking includes, in my mind, and I'll leave it up to the attorney, that would include marijuana, since that's a plant.
Right.
So it is in place, alright?
It's in place, and so this is what's prohibited by right now by our ordinance. Um, you cannot smoke in public places and places of work, including outdoor dining or bar area of food establishments. Within fifteen feet of entrances, exits, open windows and ventilation intakes of public places and places of work. And within, within fifteen feet of any outdoor dining or bar areas of food is, or of food establishments. Um, and I think the current law also doesn't allow it within s- somebody if you have children, I think. Or play, or within playgrounds or something like that. Um, and then we do have some, as Mark noted, there are some restrictions in certain parks that we, and I don't have those on, we'd have to go through there and so. What staff can do is at least kinda highlight the, we could bring forward to you the areas of our city code that addresses smoking. Um, and then there would, there would be the potential, I suppose, to add. You know, s- I mean, it might already be covered with our definition of smoking.
So Mark, is would it be, I know it says plant and everything, but is it be to put cannabis in?
You know, if you're gonna, if you're going to be amending the ordinance, certainly that would be something that would be. I guess a recommended cover all, if you wanna put it that way, so we know that it is being addressed. Um, you know, the differentiation, as Matt talked about before, you know, we have smoking with regard to this indoor clean air act stuff. But then we have overall tobacco prohibition for some of these park areas. Um, so we should really work out. How you want cannabis to fit into both of those definitions. And one, one area that we totally don't address right now is vaping.
Or edibles, cuz that's, edibles, I mean, you got cannabinoid and cannabinoid.
Right, exactly.
They can be doing those and you're, there's no way you'd know.
Right, and when you bring that up, to me, I would, I guess that I would analogize that to tobacco use, so if someone is. Using cannabis gummies, is that the same as smokeless tobacco?
Which is, it's the same as smoking, I mean, it's just an edible way of doing.
Right, so I mean. And for the parks, it's any tobacco use is prohibited. If you wanted to go down that road, we could say, hey, all cannabis use is prohibited.
But it's not even all of our parks.
Right, it's just in selected areas of some parks.
You know, so I think the question for the council is, what are you looking to regulate? If it's smoking in any public area, that that's fine, but I would say we don't do that right now with eating tobacco. Um, and so I think that's the, the direction that. We, we're looking for as the policymakers that when people say, okay, you guys need to regulate cannabis, how? Because like you said, there's about three or four areas that we can regulate it. That's about it. And so if people aren't happy with that, then they need to be speaking with their legislators.
I think we should all look at the code, the city code, the way that's just to refresh it, because I don't know.
Sure.
The specifics and.
And we can work at sending you those, those snippets of where we address smoking or tobacco in the city.
Maybe take it up at our next meeting? Does that give us enough time?
So, I think we'll get on to that, so.
I think we got a good.
I'm sorry, the other option that I didn't mention is that we could enact a moratorium. Now, right now, you're not gonna be able to get a license to do anything until next year, so it doesn't mean you still couldn't enact a moratorium. But that's, I suppose, my opinion.
So until we, you send that out, we could leave it as is with our, in line with our current smoking? Well, because you already have it in the ordinance as weed or, okay, it's, it's not identified as cannabis, but we're talking about smoking. So, and we're talking about weed or any other smoking device, which would, I think, would include vape as well, but, I, I, I think a moratorium at this point would be redundant, because the state is going to push this forward. And we have, what, January twenty-five, they would talk about potential for.
I think we, we can implement a moratorium, and it can only be in effect till, is it January first of twenty?
Which is when they're looking at issuing the licenses, so we're really not doing anything that case other, because you're not gonna, moratorium.
Right now, you're not gonna be able to get a license to, to sell it, to start a manufacturing facility of it.
But I think we're just talking about the consumption right now, as it stands in town.
Yeah, and I, I think that's the direction staff is, is that, is that what, what I'm kind of hearing is you're not even completely sure what, what, if anything, you want to regulate. And that's where I think we can get you those ordinance, the current smoking ordinances, you can take a look at those, and it'll give you an idea of.
That'd be good, so.
Let's just get that number one, I'll look at it.
There anything else that wanna have them look at, as long as there's, I think it's a good starting point.
Well, I guess the only thing that I would say to that is I don't see very many people following the fifteen-foot wall from an open door or anything of that nature, or open windows, for that matter. I just think everybody, those that are hookers are gonna use the best available cover that they can in inclement weather, and that's not how many open. I don't see it so much downtown. I see it more at motels. From that perspective, not following probably any one thing or the other, as far as that part of it goes, especially using the street for an ashtray. But, yeah, I don't, I don't know how you, how you do do that in a proficient manner, because then it has to be up to establishment to regulate that particular law as far as that part of it.
And like most of our ordinances, it comes from public complaints. And.
But it is that we haven't asked people to move away from windows, you know, and that type of stuff, because it's sucking right in the, with the airflow and whatnot, so. It's a bit interesting.
And we'll, we'll get you the ordinances. You know, we can even look at providing some recommendations, just to make it clear for everybody. I think our ordinance already covers cannabis, just from, based off of the definition, but it also doesn't hurt to just include that, that name, if you want to say, in the, in the, in the definition portion of it, so.
One, one more thing. I, I forgot, I forgot.
I think you didn't get a second.
Yeah, give me a second. I got it.
You can have discussion.
I was, went out to the worst spectacular, met with the president out there, and I forgot last time. But Chief Griferson, he told me that I was supposed to commend you and your staff for the tractor parade. I guess they go past most of the old folks homes, and I guess they said that's one of the biggest hits of orange spectaculars when they do the tractor parade, so he said I was supposed to make sure that I give you a thumbs up, he says, so. With that.
I'm sorry, Mayor, one more thing too, I forgot to mention. No, I just, yeah, about the whole cannabis thing. I know I had a conversation with Lynn, and I know the, the, or the Parks Board was gonna be looking into their ordinances too, to see if they were, wanted to bring anything forth for the recommendation, so.
You know, we're bringing that up, Matt, and like the campground, is that, is that considered a small smoking part of the?
I wouldn't think so.
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
All right. Okay, now, Dave?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Who are you gonna do?
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to adjourn. Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Gary.
Say it. Say it anyway.
I don't know if everybody's gonna jump in.
Save him?
Yes.